I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America- and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First on the agenda is oral communications from the public. Seeing none. Moving on to chairperson's remarks. In the back of your packet you'll see a section labeled "Correspondence", and behind that is an email from Sue Densmore, the TRTA president. Just included that because it referenced the wonderful job our superintendent did at convocation. And I felt that it was important that not only do the school committee members know about it, but that our town officials do as well. Our workshop has been rescheduled to Saturday, October 1st, from 8:00 a.m. to noon. Glenn Kuchar will facilitate a discussion on negotiation strategies, team building, and goal-setting. Please come prepared with proposed goals for that meeting. After that, the superintendent and I will kind of synthesize all the information and develop the goals. We need to have those approved at our next meeting on October 19th. The first district communications meeting of the year will be held on Thursday, October 6th, at 6:30 here in the library. The main agenda item will be to review the proposed changes to the regional agreement. Everybody should have a copy of that from last month. Again, come prepared. There will be an executive session at our next meeting on October 19th to prepare for negotiations with the TRTA. The contract will be emailed to everybody prior to that meeting for review. The MASCE Delegate Manual cannot include two resolutions that will be discussed and voted on at the conference because they are political issues. They concern the tax reform ballot question and the charter school reform. Please refer to the website to review these two resolutions. We will be discussing them further at our next meeting as far as how the committee feels and when we nominate our delegate. Also, as an aside, MASCE now has an app, which I just downloaded and kind of played around with a little bit. It's kind of cool. Moving on to the next item is the consent agenda.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Could you, you said goals at our workshop on the first?
Yes.
Goals as to our school committee goals?
School committee goals, yes.
Okay.
Yes. In the past, we've kind of had subcommittees try and work on those. But in talking with the superintendent today, we kind of figured, since we're kind of getting later into the school year, we want to have those done. And in order to facilitate that, if we come prepared, and with Glenn, he can kind of help us troubleshoot or brainstorm, I should say, as to what we might be looking for. And then we can finalize those and bring those to the full committee.
I was just going to add, in front of our discussion.
Yours is on. That the goal would be to do the work with Glenn on the first.
Yes.
So that Deena and I are not working to create goals. We're just synthesizing the ideas and thoughts and concepts that hopefully got boiled into three concepts, maybe, that we'll put into some SMART goal language.
Right.
But the goal is not that Deena and I are writing goals. It's all of your thoughts that we're then synthesizing.
Exactly. We're just trying to streamline it. Moving on to the consent agenda, I just want to note the donations. There are letter E under consent agenda. Two donations to accept this time. It's through the Salisbury Elementary School PTA. Four audio systems were purchased with the charitable funds. $4,000 received from the Institution for Savings. An $8,700 worth of networking infrastructure for our head-end server closet donated by Matthew Penny from Battery Ventures. Thank you to both of them. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Deb, second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I just want to note that in the Pine Grove Building Committee minutes, you should be listed as superintendent now, not assistant superintendent.
[laughing]
So it's just a minor correction.
Those lingering, I keep trying.
All in favor? Good, unanimous. Moving on to student representative report, which we don't have a student representative yet. Mr. Ford, did you want to explain?
Absolutely. So you obviously are accustomed to having a student representative at the table. That is not going to change. I did outline this in my superintendent's report, but it's worth noting here. Per the statute, there is, it's supposed to be a representation of the student advisory body. We call it our student council. So those positions are students who would be elected by their peers to represent them with you as the audience, as the governing body of the district. So that is the plan. I think what, when we had talked this through and with Tim Ruggeri, the principal of the high school, we had thought about more of a rotation, so you see more faces, but members of the student council. And then hopefully even encouraging all members of the student council to come and participate and listen and understand the governance structure that they're a part of more formally. So that is the plan. The student council is set. They are, I think they have met once and need to convene and have their elections. But that is the plan, so that by October, there is a representative or representatives that are on a rotating basis and hear reporting. And again, our encouragement is going to be, which we have always said, be here and participate in the meeting. By statute, they have a voice at the table. They cannot enter executive session, and they're a non-voting member. But I hope, when homework and sports schedules allow, that they will participate and stay for the meeting and certainly engage in the topics that are coming forward. So that is the plan.
Thank you. New business. Is there anybody who would like to propose agenda items for future meetings? Or anything that is urgent that we need to discuss tonight? Moving on to reports and deliberations.
In my superintendent's report, I spoke a little bit about convocation and the fact that we are focusing this year on social-emotional learning. I think it's important, certainly, that you hear what's happening in the schools. But we want to start with a little bit of, just an overview of this term, SEL, or social-emotional learning, that has become the, by far, largest buzzword in the state, and I think nationally. But just to make sure we have an understanding, a common understanding, of what we mean when we talk about social-emotional learning. And then we've thrown in this PBIS model. It's a method, it's a framework, it's a methodology, it's not a program. But positive behavioral intervention and supports has been around for a long time. It was part of IDEA, as far as the language. So it's, I wanted to start by setting the frame so that we understand what is going on and what we're focusing on. Obviously, we are all relational beings, and that's part of the focus of social-emotional learning. So tonight, you're going to hear from Beth Yando, the principal at Newbury Elementary School. As I shared with the chair today, my goal is that you then hear from the principal and maybe just the principal or other people, a show from Pine Grove and Salisbury and from the middle school and the high school. So each month, you're getting a chance to see what this SEL PBIS umbrella is translating to in the schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Kim to first give you a tour through this, what has now become a somewhat, hopefully, familiar triangle, but to speak through this concept as far as that, in that model. Oh, that's your microphone, sorry.
I have no microphone. Thanks. Thank you. So does everybody have the visual of the triangle in front of you? So my goal is to briefly give you some background in regards to the structure that we're working in when we talk about a multi-tiered system of support. But then also to break apart, what is PBIS compared to the social and emotional health component? And they are definitely interconnected. So let me first just walk through the multi-tiered system of support. We've talked a lot about this when we do budget presentations or when we talk about RTI. And basically, in this system of support that you will see in academics, you will see in curriculum, and you will also see in PBIS, it's a structure, like Brian said, it's not a program. So within this structure, if you look at the lower half of the triangle, that's what they call Tier One. And so Tier One instruction refers to giving instruction to the whole student body. So that is the first kind of wave of instructions that students will receive, right? So, and usually, that is the primary prevention layer. Above that is what they call Tier Two. So some of those kids who have already experienced that initial lesson need it repeated one more time, or maybe a second time. And so then they will experience a Tier Two structure or intervention. That usually hits about 5% to 10% of our population. Occasionally, you have a small percent of a population, it's usually between 1% and 5% of students, that needs something more intense. They've gone through the Tier One instruction. They've gone through Tier Two, a repeated instruction or supports, and now they need something even more. So as you go up that triangle, the intensity of the intervention is stronger, okay? Because it matches the students' need. So within that structure, we have, oops, sorry. We have academics working, right? When we talk about reading support and what I need and when time, it works in that same structure. Our newly, our new initiative about PBS, PBIS, excuse me, works within this structure as well. So that's what I want to focus on now. Before I go into the PBIS and very briefly the social and emotional, is there any questions, or are there any questions regarding the triangle and the level of supports? Good, okay. So if we look at the right side, that's, the right side is reflective of the positive behavioral interventions and supports. So again, within that structure, the supports increase as they get up to the top. And if you look at the bottom, what we're doing right now is focusing on behavior only. So PBIS is not a cookie-cutter program. It's not a program that you buy. It's something that the schools create to help maintain, excuse me, maintain safe and supportive schools through behavior. And so what they do is they explicitly teach kids how to walk through the classroom, how to bring up a lunch tray, how to line up. And all of those procedures that we sometimes take for granted, but can also cause a lot of anxiety with kids, especially if it's unorganized or chaotic, or they just, it could be a simply unsafe environment. So they've gone through, and Beth is going to share more about this, how they've really taught explicitly to every single class using the same instruction and the same lesson plans, how we act respectful to one another in certain settings. And then again, sometimes there are kids who need an additional reminder or additional support. They're in Tier Two. They might have additional models that help them, or a buddy that walks with them in the hall to remind them how the behavior is meant. Occasionally, when you have somebody who is really having a difficult time adjusting to certain rules, you may need to have some individual counseling that happens within the school or outside. So you can see that as they go up the pyramid, if kids need a more intense support system, they'll get it. But that right side, that PBIS, is all about behavior, okay? The left side is about social and emotional health. And that can be, really pull in a lot of different components. There are curriculums out there that have great lessons on building social and emotional wellness. So I think of, if we look at behavior as an action, I think of the heart and the mind being that social and emotional piece. So where there isn't a cookie-cutter program in PBIS, there are curriculums out there such as Responsive Classroom that really speaks to different levels of teaching social and emotional wellness. And you can see how, if somebody is feeling good about themselves, then it's easier for them to act in appropriate way, walking down the halls, bringing up their trays. They're not dealing with other issues that may be related to that. So I just wanted to kind of give you a brief overview. As far as where we are in the district, the PBIS is being launched this year. We are focusing on PD for social and emotional health this year. We want to make sure before we go into implementing any plans or looking at curriculum that the staff here have a really good understanding about social and emotional health before we dive into doing more intense work around it, looking at curriculum. So our goal is to raise the level awareness, not just of the teachers, but of the community, of the school committee, so that then we can move forward, kind of all in lock and step. Because like Brian said, there are so many buzzwords out there. And we just really want to make sure, as we begin this journey, that the terminology is crystal clear and that we use the words appropriately within the setting. So that's my intro. Did I miss anything? So that, so what you're going to see for the next few school committee meetings is how each of the elementary schools have taken PBIS, the structure, and really made it fit into their school and the different things. And you will start to see similarities in what they are doing within that structure.
I'm just curious, maybe this is what we're going to learn about, but each of the three elementary schools has a different focus?
For PBIS?
Yes.
Yes.
And, well, no, for social and emotional.
A different focus?
Well, it says, I'm looking at what it says here.
Yes, these are just different samplings that we have currently in the district right now. So we took an inventory to say, how do you address social and emotional? And some people said, we do the care program, or we do Responsive Classroom. So that's just an example, and I just kind of put it into the tier of what we have because we did a needs assessment to say, well, what do you do for social and emotional, even though we have nothing kind of formal as a district program?
If I can just add, so, still not on.
Oh, we'll switch.
Got all its juice. Beginning of year kinks. Mr. Lathrop's having fun. So you'll notice, got my papers, the effort and attitude at SES, that's not a new concept, right? You've heard that from Principal Montanari for years. So NES Cares isn't even brand-new this year. But that's, it's, that's the name, kind of the name they've given to their initiative. But it's not, it's how they've interpreted it as a school culture, as a school community. So that's where every, every school community is unique. Every town is unique. So each school is going to identify how they'll address it. Same basic concepts, same basic core, so that when we're transitioning students up to the middle school, we're expecting same behaviors and some buzzwords. But as far as the initiatives, that's, that's unique to the schools.
Could you explain safe behavior to me, please? Yes. What you define as-
Oh, say, keeping your hands-
Safer, unsafe behavior?
Walking down the hall with your hands going, oh, sorry. See, that's a good example. You don't want it, and I kicked Brian. So that type of, just controlling your body and, or just using inside voices as they're going up and down the hallways. And if classroom doors could be opening or shut so that you're not disturbing the learning going on around you. So that type of, running up and down the stairs. I got a lot of them.
Dan?
I had a quick question, and that is that, so we see that NES Cares and the Character Assembly at Pine Grove and effort and attitude at SES. Will we then see something rolling out at the middle school and the high school as well? And we'll get a glimpse of that at some point.
Yep, yep. So our first step was kind of to do a needs assessment. What do you currently do around this? And then we look at what those activities or lessons target. Where are the voids? Where are the voids within the district and the grade levels and so on and so forth? So we, so again, this year, the focus is raising level of awareness while, wow, we don't have enough Tier Two. We have a lot that's happening here. And then we have a lot in that third tier, but we need something in the middle. So it's that type of conversation as they gain more knowledge moving forward.
Say one more thing. So last year, you remember, we had, we got the grant. We found out very late in the game, we started developing these social-emotional plans. I think it's a fair statement to say, this type of discussion is more, is more comfortable at the elementary level. When you start getting into the middle and high school, you don't talk about walking in lines and halls. So it's a much more organic discussion at the elementary level. But what's happened over the course of the end of last year in doing some of this planning is, obviously, it translates differently at the secondary level. But folks who were starting to get involved in writing these plans organically started to get excited about what this, what this means for consistency as far as approach across the schools. So it is growing, it is happening, and it's going to happen more organically, which is undoubtedly the best way for it to happen, so. Any other questions?
Of course. You're looking at me, right?
There's no way.
Yeah, I have two questions, actually. So I guess the first one is a tough one, since you don't have the whole thing kind of fleshed out yet, what it's going to look like. But where's the resources? Where are we finding the resources to put in place what we are currently doing?
So with the social and emotional planning that went on this past year, at the end of the year through that grant, like I said, one of the first steps was to do a needs assessment. And they started to look at curriculum. So I can tell you that when we start to do budgets for next year, you may see some requests, I'll tell you right now, for possibly social and emotional curriculum to bring into the elementary schools first. And then also, I'll tell you right now, the science has got to get updated because we have new standards and we do not have the materials, the training, to implement some of those things. So you will see this again. And hopefully, before that point, we'll be able to present some of the draft plans that are about this thick. They did a lot of, they put in a lot of hours for that plan, so it's very thorough.
I was going to say, just to confirm, our District Wellness Committee, I talked with the chairperson today. We've had a district wellness committee that has been very, under my leadership, has been very compliance-driven, to make sure we meet all of the vending machines aren't in, you know, out of compliance, and the cafeteria food is the right servings. But we're going to expand that framework and have the district wellness committee be all about wellness, whether that's social, emotional, physical, spiritual, everything, right on down. So with that push, as Kim mentioned, there's, there's a glowing and glaring hole in our instruction around wellness. Certainly, we're going to talk about policies that are requiring explicit instruction about substance abuse and prevention. So that's, what, one little iota of the, of the full spectrum that we need to be figuring out. So that is absolutely something that we, we do, I would confidently say, we do well informally. I think our teachers find great ways to have incredibly relevant discussions about wellness, about substance abuse, you know, through athletics, through performing arts, through general classroom discussion. Lots of wonderful discussions happening. But it's not an explicit curriculum that we can say. We are making sure that we reach every student in this district with this core set of competencies. So that's also in the works. And it's, right, it's becoming a mandate.
Just to go back to the question, so if I'm looking at the bottom tier of the triangle, is that, and I'm asking, where is the, where's the, where's the resource coming from that? Is that all classroom teachers and administration and bus drivers? I'm just assuming, does it-
So for the PBIS, it's everybody.
Yes.
It's everybody. Bus drivers, after-school workers. Like, that's the whole intent, is to get everybody on board with that, that it's in the school community, that's interacting with students.
Right. And then if, if I look at the secondary prevention, is that, do we have someone who's kind of a specialist, so to speak? I know there's no true specialists, but is there someone in each school that's kind of, I'm guessing-
Judgment counselor. They have, absolutely. That meets with small groups of kids, that does supports at that Tier Two level. That creates behavior plans for what that child needs, so yes, absolutely.
That's outside of the classroom, kind of. It takes it up and out of the classroom.
And if I could just add, I would say, the Tier Two and Tier One, or Tier, I'm sorry, Tier Two and Three, those more, more intensive interventions, have been happening. What we haven't done is that, that bottom 80% to 90% of whole school, we all own this. We all own the emotions of the students walking in. And as I mentioned in the report, we cannot change the way they're walking in. All we can do is change the way we respond to them. And it's little tiny choices that have huge ripple effects. So it's that, it's that type of discussion, that's what we're talking about. It's not, it's not something off the shelf. It's not, it's not a product. It's about how we interact with one another. It's culture. Yep. It's culture.
And my other question is, I understand that, again, you don't have the kind of yellow half of it, but, and that the green half is very, it's around, I know, at least from the materials that we've received from Pine Grove, it's 10 very specific areas. That's wonderful in the school, and I know that's our concentration. But is there an effort to kind of take that and apply that so that as we're in this kind of whole-child mode of education, to kind of take those behaviors so that they'll be not just applied in a hallway walking, for instance, but would be something that the student would kind of take and exhibit elsewhere? I mean, I guess a lot of what I've read about the basics of social-emotional learning, when they go through the research, is they talk about, especially with young children, having them set up in, for instance, a grocery store, a play grocery store. And as they're going through the line, there's an adult there that can kind of critique the interaction and help guide it. And that helps them kind of normalize what the appropriate behavior is. And I'm just wondering if there's a way to take this very school-specific type of instruction and make it so that it's a larger-
Larger community.
Yes.
Absolutely. And I would, and that's a great suggestion, and we can, we have leadership on Friday, and we can talk about, because I'm, the teachers themselves, I think for kids to be able to adapt to a new set of procedures, to make it meaningful to them, not just within the hallway, but like you said, on a broader scope. So, and Beth could probably talk more about some of the lessons because I do think they go into the why. It's not just walk straight, quiet, you know, they, because if kids don't understand why, that's not going to be, you know, modeled outside of the classroom. It's going to be a one-isolated behavior. And that's really not what we're trying to do. I think on the other side of it, too, as we start to develop our knowledge about social and emotional, about the materials that are out there, that's going to influence that behavior piece as well. When we talk about respecting yourself and others and so on, that's going to fit together nicely with that, so that there is that carryover into the larger community.
Okay. Thank you. Tony?
Kim, you said that this effort is comprehensive throughout the school. How are the ancillary staff or support staff, how do they know about this culture?
They, we had them, I want to say, we couldn't mandate that they come during the social and emotional training, but during the school, we paid for the IAs to come in and hear about the PBIS initiative and what's happening at the schools and be trained. And then during the PD day, all of the, it was agreed, all of the staff, including the IAs, office staff, everybody, would be trained because it's all, it's, everyone's on board with us. Everybody, everybody. It was awesome, yeah, yeah. And again, I think Beth is going to be able to give you some insight just as an example of what it looks like in a real school.
I think it's probably helpful, actually, I'm not sure if there are more questions, but actually have Beth Yando present, so you can hear explicitly what's happening at Newbury. And it will probably put more of a concrete picture on what we're trying to talk about very, very 30,000-foot. So Beth, come on up. Does that one work? Yeah, this one works.
Thank you, Michelle. Can you hear me? Okay. I always bring it close by. Well, thanks for having me. I'm excited because PBIS is alive and kicking at Newbury Elementary School. And parents of kids at Newbury probably have already heard about our green and blue ticket. So just let me give you a little history about our PBIS team. First, when this initiative was first adopted by the district, I asked some teachers who would want to be on the team. And my team includes Kristen Malino, Jen Brown, Sarah Burns, Judith Canning, who is an instructional assistant, Leah Peacock, and Margot Ryan, and Kathleen DeStadler is, helps us when we need her expertise. So we sat together last spring, and the team decided that before we even started introducing this to the staff, it would make sense to create a handbook that we would share with everyone. So they created this nice handbook, NES Cares. It's our staff handbook. And you're going to see that everything I talk about today has NES Cares on it with the hands. We had already been using the Cares philosophy at NES. But we soon realized that we thought the students understood what cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control meant, but they really didn't. We never said to them, what does cooperation look like on the bus, in the bathroom? So we thought we needed to get really specific. And so in the handbook, we created lesson plans that we've been using since the beginning of school with stations where students come and they're trained. I'm going to talk a little bit more about our specific stations in a minute. But what we realized is that, in order for this to work, we need to have buy-in from everyone at NES. everyone at NES, the custodians, the kitchen staff, the support staff, all the teachers for it to work. And we needed to kind of unite as a school and create a culture where all students felt like they were cared for by anyone who was at the school. And so we decided that we would put together a video, and we would show it to the students on the first day of school. And I don't think any of us on the team realized how it was gonna bring our culture of our school together. So I'm gonna let you watch the video now. It's called NES Cares. It was a lot of fun making, and it is all set up around PBIS and the stations and the expected behaviors we wanted in the school. So everyone who is at NES is in the video. So we're gonna show that now, and then I'll talk a little more about our next steps. I've watched it about fifty times, I like it.
Welcome back, NES. Cares. Cooperation. Self-control. Cares. NES Cares. How do you show NES cares? On the bus. Like your bus driver, stay seated, keep track of your belongings. Always. Shh, other classes are learning. Show self-control. Please keep your feet on the floor. Next time, I will. One foot, one step. You can do this, and it keeps you safe. You're in a classroom with a teacher, substitute, or instructional assistant. You're here to learn. Learn. Do your personal best. Every day. Every single day. And the girls' room. And the boys' room. Yes, even in the bathrooms. Show cares. Be responsible. Keep them clean. Germs spray illness, please wash your hands. Paper towels, go in the trash can. Help us keep the bathrooms clean. And, when you're on the playground. Be a friend. Yes, a good friend shows empathy. Ask a friend to play. Hey, Mrs. Positora, wanna slay? Sure, over here, come. Include everyone. Don't forget to be safe. We are here to help you. Have fun. What about lunch? You can show cares at lunch, too. This lunch line will run faster, everyone practices cares. Hi, Charlene. Hi, Mrs. Dolan. Is my hand number in? Okay. Hey, guys, can I sit with you? Of course. Of course you can sit with us. Thank you. Whoa, wow. Don't forget to show cares in the coatroom. Keep your coming work high. Show self-control in here. Yes, self-control. These benches, they're for sitting. And don't forget, we are all here to help you. To teach you. To make you wiser. Stronger. We show cares, too. We show cares, too. Cooperation. We work together. Suction. We speak up. Responsibility. We do our jobs with a smile. Empathy. We care about how you feel. Self-control. We keep our hands to ourselves. We walk, even though we wanna run. We listen. Cares. Be there that you learn. We care that you learn. Learn to cooperate. Learn to assert yourself. Learn to be responsible for yourself and your belongings. Learn to be empathetic. Learn to have self-control. Even when it's hard. Especially when it's hard, you have to show self-control. We care. We care. We care how you.
That really brought the school together. We had a lot of fun making the video, and Sarah Burns did all the taping, and then Jen Brown took it at home that night. And at one o'clock in the morning, she sent it to me, so we all could see. So it does its job. On the first day of school, I had a student who has anxiety, really nervous about transitioning into another grade. And he came to the office, I kinda had to help him separate from his mother. He came in my office and sat for a while, and I said, there's a surprise, and I'm gonna show all the kids this afternoon, but I'm gonna let you see it now. I showed him the video, and then we were giving all the kids on the first day these little, like, medals that say "super awesome." So I said, could you help me sort those? So he sorted those. And then he said, I think I'm ready to go down and meet my teacher. So I brought him down. But that video was the thing that turned him around, so it works well. And we showed it to the students on the first day of school. And I really think that they all really felt that they were cared for. We also showed a video called Kindness, and it was about, I think the Falmouth Schools actually filmed it. And Kathleen DeStadler found it last year and sent it to us. We really liked it. So we decided to show it to the students after we introduced all our new students. And the video is about this girl that goes to school, she looks a little different, she's on the playground, the kids aren't saying nice things about her. And it talks about the way of a kindness. So we showed that after. And then I asked any of the new students if they wanted to share their first experience at NES on the first day. And I was amazed, I didn't think any of them would, but we had students raise their hand, and they said, today when I was at lunch, someone asked me to sit with them. One little girl said, I was really nervous, but someone asked me on the playground if I would play with them, someone showed me how to go to the bathroom, where the bathroom was located. So it was really nice to see. But the missing link for us at NES was having cares and not teaching the kids what cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control looks like in all the different areas. So we decided to do a training. And in our handbook, there are expected behaviors for each area. So we started with the playground and cafeteria. They don't have any of the posters here to show you, but they're all based around the Cares philosophy. So we did playground and cafeteria on day two. Day three, we did the bathroom training, which I can show you, which is a very important one. And we talked to the students about, we want the bathrooms clean, and we want you to be safe in the bathrooms. So cooperation in our bathroom, make sure an adult knows where you are. We talked about, you need to sign out, so adult knows where you are, if something happens, we know where you are, we can find you, and you'll be safe. Assertion is to report problems, which they're very good at doing. They like to tell us, you know, if the toilet isn't flushing the right way, or if we're out of soap, which we want them to. We literally brought them in, showed them how to flush and do all of that, because we always have these expectations for students, we just assume they know what to do, and a lot of times, they really don't. And the questions that they asked at the end were great. Responsibility, flush toilet, wash hands, put paper towel in trash can, go right back to class. Empathy, respect privacy, wait your turn, think about custodians, how they have to clean up later. And we talked about how hard their job was and how hard they worked to keep the bathroom clean. And if they do all their responsibility in the bathroom, the bathrooms are gonna smell nicer, and they're gonna be a nicer place to go. One big thing, sometimes students like to go in the bathrooms and hang on the stalls. So we talked a lot about, as a PBIS team, how can we address that in a positive way? Because PBIS is really focusing all the positive behaviors and not the negative behaviors, which is harder to do than you would think. But when you start talking to students, sometimes you wanna word something kind of a negative way, so you have to kind of stop. So we were trying to think of a way, instead of saying, don't hang on the stalls, or don't hang on the bathroom door. So we came up with, keep your feet on the floor, and we use it all day long, and they understand what that means. When we were doing the bathroom training, I told the students, the only time that they could have their feet off the floor is if we were at a lockdown drill, and they were in a stall, they were allowed to get up on the toilet. So we were very specific, and they had a few questions about that. And then self-control, which we all know that this is the hardest for some of our students. Keep your feet on the floor, one pump of soap, water stays in the sink, in a voice level two. We taught the student different voice levels. Zero is no talking, one is a whisper, two is an inside voice, and three is an outside voice. So when I see students walking in the hall, I always recognize their behavior. And they can get a green ticket to bring back to their class. And I'll say, you're doing a great job, no talking, zero voice, good job. Or I'll say, zero to one, when they're lining up in the lunchroom, to give them a visuals. But this is in all the classrooms, it's in the lunchroom. The lunchroom's very specific, they know that when they're lining, when they're at the tables, they have an inside voice. So just the visuals are really helping the students. And the nice thing is that we've had consistent people doing the trainings. I've done the training, Mr. Jewett, Mrs. DeStadler, and Mrs. Ryan, and Judith Canning has helped us with a couple. So all the trainings, we have the same group of kids in the same grade levels. So they get used to the same trainer, and we decided to do that so it was consistent and clear for grade levels. And it has made a big difference. We also did a hallway training, coatroom and cubbies, bus, which we did today. We had the buses coming for bus evacuation, it worked out great. We went on the buses, we did on-the-bus training, we had one class at a time. In the past, when we've done bus evacuation, we've had the bus full. But we decided just have one class at a time, and then they did the bus evacuation, and it worked very well. So on the bus, cooperation would be share seats, allow others to sit with you. Assertion, calmly ask, please stop if someone's bothering you. Politely ask for help if needed. Responsibility, stay seated, keep track of your belongings, keep food tucked away. Empathy, say hello and thank you. And we modeled this for the students, be friendly and kind. Self-control, stay seated, keep feet on the floor, and voice level two. The students had the bus training, so I went out to the buses at the end of the day, I gave the bus drivers a roll of green tickets, and the bus drivers received this poster and then the voice level poster that we will be having on the bus to remind the students. And it was kind of funny, because I was out there doing my best duty, I gave this to all the bus drivers, and as the kids were getting on the buses, they, I said to them, the bus driver has all the posters, but they still were being a little noisy, so I just stepped on the bus, and I said, remember the training today? And they, one bus, they all turned forward, put their feet on the floor, and sat like that. And I'm like, this is pretty powerful stuff. And I said, I'm gonna be asking your bus driver, now that you know what NES cares looks like on the bus, we expect you to follow that. Other posters we have is, we have one in the classroom, so they know what cooperation, assertion, responsibility, empathy, and self-control in the classroom looks like. I won't read them all, but two of the ones that we're really focusing are empathy and self-control. We talked a lot about empathy on opening day and how students feel, and what you can do to make them feel like they belong. And we really stress with the kids on opening day after showing the video that they all belong there, and we want them to be there. And if you don't feel good about coming to school, you're not gonna learn, and it's our job to make sure you learn. So we talked about empathy in the classroom, help others, wait your turn, self-control, again, keep hands and feet to yourself, whole-body listening, which is a term that's used in the social thinking curriculum, which Kathleen DeStadler and our speech and language pathologist go in the classrooms and teach the students, that's starting in kindergarten. And then voice level zero to two. Some other signage that we have through the school is in the hallways, we have certain places where the students stop and wait for their teacher, so they're recognizing that. And let me just explain the ticket system. So we wanted to recognize students for following the cares in the different places in the building throughout the day. So we decided that in the classroom, your teachers would be giving you blue tickets, and you would brainstorm, as a class, classroom celebrations that you might do, if you get so many blue tickets. So this is kind of the individual part that they're doing in the classroom, that the students are kind of creating this with their teacher. Now, the green tickets are for if you see a student outside of the classroom following cares, walking in the hallway, maybe with a zero voice, I might go over, I'll give them a ticket. They take this ticket, and they go back and they write, say if they're in Mrs. Shori's room in second grade, they write 2S. And they put it in a Ziploc bag in their classroom. Every afternoon at 2:45, the kids start coming in the office with their little baggies, they dump them in a big basket. And then just before dismissal, I get on the intercom, and I tell them that I'm going to pull a green ticket, and our NES class for the day is, today it was Mrs. Malano's class. And I go there in the morning, I take their picture, I print it out, and I have a bulletin board that says NES cares. So all the classes that have had their green ticket drawn so far, they have a picture up. Right now, that is so motivating to the students. I think I need to do a little work with the fifth and sixth graders, so I think I'm gonna pull them together and ask them what they might want for some celebrations, and just get their feedback. Because I say to them, they're role models, but when you have a school that's pre-kated too, you have a lot of developmental ages that you need to take into account. So just a couple stories, when, there was one class, Mrs. Jacobson's class, they were walking in the hallway, and I didn't have a green ticket, and I told them that I was gonna go to their classroom when they got back and give them a green ticket. So I wrote one J on it for them to save time. And that afternoon, I happened to pull their ticket, and we heard them, now they're in the circle, I'm in the office, when I pulled their ticket, and I said, Mrs. Jacobson's class, you should've heard the screams. They were so ecstatic. And today, it was Mrs. Malano's class in the circle, and they screamed. And the kids get so excited about the tickets. If they come in and they see me over by the intercom, and I'm ready to pull a ticket, they come running over and dump their tickets in, I wait for them. And today, I had two fourth-grade boys who were getting dismissed, and they had left the office, and one of them saw me go to the intercom, so he made his mother stop, and they came back, and they were standing in the office doorway, because they wanted to know if they were the NES cares classroom. So it's working great. And the kids like the green tickets, and we're recognizing them for positive behavior, that's what we wanna do. At the training, we had our recess playground monitors there, because they're a key part in this. They're monitoring the kids on the playground and in the lunchroom, and that's a place where you need to use a lot of self-control, empathy, and all of that. And so I think it's going extremely well. The PBIS team has done an unbelievable job, teaching the teachers and the students. The nice thing about this handbook is, all the lesson plans are in here that the kids have gone through. So the other day, I noticed in the lunchroom that we've done the lunchroom training, but lining up, the teachers kind of weren't reminding the students. So I sent an email, and I said, we're gonna skip a training today, I'm going to, in the morning on the intercom, go through the lunchroom poster and remind the students. And the key thing is, meeting with your staff throughout the year and making adjustments, because there are a few things that aren't working. So at our next monthly PLC meeting, I'll sit with the teachers and we'll brainstorm. I also have times where I meet with my instructional assistants, because they bring a whole different perspective to what's going on in the building, and I wanna know how this is working for them. So I think that's about it. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? The video was fabulous.
Thank you. It turned out really well, and it really brought us together. And I have to say, this professional development before the school year start has been the best that I've ever experienced in my twenty-six, twenty-seven years in education. And the teachers were really energized by it. Because working with these students who have social, emotional issues or behaviors that we need to help them with, it's a struggle for a classroom teacher. They have a law on their plate, they have to work very hard. So anything we can do to support them really- So anything we can do to support them really helps. So I think it's been successful. As I said, the fifth and sixth graders, I think they're like, "Miss Yendo's a little crazy with her green tickets." But they, they spring the tickets down too in the afternoon, so.
Sure they do.
Yes.
Thank you so much, Beth.
You're welcome.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you, Beth. Still not working.
Moving. Yes.
We're inviting. That was for the invitation. Oh, now this one's not on.
Yes, now you're going to need a microphone that works, Mr. Forget, because your superintendent's entry plan is next.
This one's working. So again, just to clarify, so that is the N E S interpretation. That is what worked for the N E S community. Next month, like I said, you'll have an opportunity to get a presentation about Pine Grove and then Salisbury, and you'll see the differences, which is good. The way that the, each community and staff develops this is important, because as Monique said, it's about culture, and one person cannot build culture. So, thank you for my ticket, Miss Yendo. So where we are, we're moving on.
Yes, we are. Superintendent's entry plan.
Sorry. I'm not going to read through this in detail, but just, again, to refresh your memory, as part of the new superintendent's induction program, this is a requirement. This is a good practice regardless of whether or not I was part of an induction program. It's important for someone coming in as a leader to get a solid understanding of the organization. And as I had mentioned, and it says in here, after 21 years, I certainly know everyone's names more than I would if I was brand-new to a district. And I know culture, and I've seen what's happened, and I know history, but there's a lot that I don't know. So it's important that I, that I have a formal entry planning process, and my proposal is that for this first year, I am all about listening. That doesn't mean that there isn't a very full day, and I spend my day just listening, but the, the concept of go slow to go fast is my approach for the year. I don't, certainly having discussions with folks close to me, the leadership team, but everyone, from students to town officials, town administrators, to chiefs of police, to state legislators, it's important that I'm hearing from folks. On the, on the first page, is actually the backside of the cover page, the three questions that will frame what I'm doing, and it's really setting the purpose, is, one and two, I need to know what the strengths are, and I know, need to know what our challenges are. And I certainly have an opinion on that. I know Kimberly has an opinion on that. Michelle, having been here three months, already has an opinion on that. But it's probably different than each of your opinions, and it's different than coming from a teacher's perspective, or from a sixth-grade student's perspective, or high school senior. So those two questions are easy questions to ask, but there's a lot of data depending on who is being, who that question is being asked of. So and then obviously, the third part of that is, we need to know the good, we need to know the bad, and then we need to know how we get from point A to point B, because the goal is never to be stagnant, always improving. So that's the, obviously, the, the purpose of this plan is to learn that information. You know, I outlined in here, I think it's important for folks to know, before I even start asking questions, I think it's important for, for everyone to know within the trian community what I hold as my core values. So I've outlined them here. You know, for me, I, I mentioned it earlier, we are relational. We are in a human services, human services organization, and, you know, as outlined by, by Beth this evening, it is about the relationships. And so that is as much about administrators' relationships with each other, with staff, staff with students, students with parents, administrators with parents, it's everyone. So for me, communication is one of my core values, that, that, that effective communication is absolutely paramount to our success. If we cannot communicate, we cannot change. You know, I, I believe every student, as I wrote here, is entitled to an education that's grounded in common expectations, but is also unique to the child. And obviously, that is one of the greatest challenges in education. We talk about the multi-tiered system of supports, that triangle, and has implications. And the term was differentiation. Now we're moving to what I think is a far better term of inclusionary practice, that everything we do, it's inclusive, whether we're talking about a student who needs assistance because their primary language is not English, or because they have a learning disability, or because, you name it, whatever the responsibility, or they just are taking an extra year to develop a certain skill. It's our job to meet them where they are. And I believe every student has that right. And then, as I, as I wrote here, I think for me as an individual, I hold myself accountable, but then I think for us as educators, we have to reflect on what we believe, and then we have to collaborate with others. Because my personal beliefs mean nothing if they're not challenged by Monique. And she offers her pers, I don't mean that on purpose, but, but Monique does love to challenge my beliefs. And so, i- in general, it's, I'm a better person when someone says, "Yeah, but..." Have you thought about? Because that causes me to reflect on my own beliefs, and is that accurate? Is that the best way forward? So those, for me, those three are my core values that drive what I do on a daily basis. Throughout this, the document, or the balance of the document is outlining the process. I began this process, I have met with some administrators, haven't met with everyone yet. I have met with all the principals. But you can see here the folks who I will be meeting with. I intend to have certainly one-on-one individual interviews, there will be group conversations. I am intending to, to have an online survey, and I'm, I haven't developed it yet, because my goal is to develop the survey in a way that anyone could respond, whether you are a school committee member, or you are a student, or a parent, or a teacher. So I'm hoping to develop that later in the fall, once I've heard. So once, once the data is starting to kind of frame some trends, I want to use that to try and tease out those trends a little further. So I will also be reviewing documents. Obviously, I was, I was a part of the process of developing lots of documents, but I certainly think it's, it's helpful to go back and with a very different lens, review the documents to pull out specifically the trends as they're being identified. It's important to note, obviously, if I'm meeting with a group of parents at Pine Grove School, and they're sharing information, it's not confidential. But any conversations that I'm having individually with folks, that those are confidential conversations. I'm collecting data, and then the purpose is to go through those comments and those thoughts and pull out trends. It's not to pull out what one principal, or, or one school committee member, or one town official may have thought. It's to pull out common trends, because that's where the power will lie in figuring out what we collectively believe are our strengths, are our challenges, and then being able to identify as a community. So for, through the fall, I will be listening. Call it a listening tour. I will be writing a lot, and then, and again, through the fall, just listening, kind of step through the, all the various groups that I intend to interview or hold forums with. And I outline the questions here that I intend to ask. They're not, they will probably change somewhat depending on the audience, because certainly some questions would be pertinent to some folks and would not be to others. But those eight questions are the, the general tone of what I'm looking to, to tease out of each of these folks or groups. As I mentioned, the survey and the document review will also be part of that. The next step, perfectly timed with a nice quiet season like budget season, is to take that and just to analyze the data and to then share it with you. My goal is that by April, I would be able to share with you the trends, so that by, through the spring, we can start to plan. And, and the concept will, or the goal is to come up with a theory of action. The term strategic plan is thrown out very loosely. The district did have a strategic plan at one point, we do not right now. I believe we spent considerable money on developing a plan that was a good five, seven-year plan, and it sat on the shelf. I think it was 400 pages long, and it wasn't a living, breathing document. So my goal is to, to develop a theory of action that is very fluid, and then have a three-year strategic plan. We do, we have great school improvement plans, we have district development plans, but we don't have a strategic plan that really speaks and outlines capital needs and facilities needs, and, and challenges, and enrollment challenges, sort of really tease out collectively what we believe, at this point, at the end of this process, is what we believe as a community is our goals for the next three years. And again, the goal, my intention is not to have a 50, 100-page document, but to have a, I don't even, I'm not even going to put a number out there, because I don't know, but to have a document that is able to be living and breathing, and is something that we can review routinely to say, "Is this still what we want?" So, and then by next summer, we begin implementing. To note, obviously, I'm guessing that there will be some things that have budgetary implications. So certainly by the time we get to the budget process after the holidays, I won't have reported everything out, but there are certainly going to be trends that will inform next year's budget development. But I think moving forward beyond into next summer, the development of the FY19 budget, I'm hoping is considerably more driven by the results of this process. So, so that is my proposal.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Dick?
Yeah. How many priorities do you think you'll have for implementation after you do a plan? Because you're going to gather a lot of information, and then you're going to have to filter that out to find out what is number one, two, and three. So have you thought about that?
I, I have. I mean, certainly, it can't be 50. I, I think it's different than a one-year plan where, you know, if you look at our school improvement plans, at one point, there were, there were SIPs that had eight, nine, 10 goals, and you can't, you, you can't do more than two or three goals. And it's dangerous to say, "Everything we need to do needs to be written in a goal," right? But I think so, it's, it's going to be more than that, but it can't be 50. So I think five to 10.
You're going to have to tie it to the budget, too, so that's.
Absolutely.
So you're going to pare it down.
But I think, I want to tie it to the budget, but by the same token, I think the strategic plan needs to be somewhat untied to the budget, because it needs to be what we collectively believe. Whether or not we can achieve it is a very real discussion that we have with the towns and with the committee. But the strategic plan is what we are saying, we as a community, including towns, officials, parents, community members, saying what we as a community believe is our priority. And I think we, we certainly need to tease out, you know, some of these questions, what is the sacred cow? What is the thing that we say we are doing very well and have to protect at all costs? I think it's fair to say that has been identified historically as class sizes. We've said that for years. We still have very favorable class sizes, mostly. Sorry to those teachers who have 26 in there, listening to that comment, saying, "Not in my room." So I, so is that still? I don't know. I, again, I have my opinion. I'm certainly very interested in hearing from others, so.
Anybody else? So you want a motion to approve the process and timeline, correct?
I believe it's helpful, yes. I mean, this is my formal entry plan into the position.
Right. Do we have a motion to receive the formal presentation of the superintendent's entry plan and to approve the process and timeline as presented? Motion? Thank you, Norissa. Do we have a second, please? Thank you, Linda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is unanimous. Moving on to the stadium redevelopment, Mr. Forget?
Not much has changed since we last spoke. As of today, we are officially moving into kind of the punch list phase with the stadium itself. The track is striped, bleachers filled, turf, everything is done. The, what remains of David White and Sons' contract is finish work that needs to be done after the building is done. I am 90%... 90? Looking for Michelle, Michelle for approval. About 90%, maybe 95% confident that we are still sticking, and to say to you tonight, October 14th, Friday night, 7:00 PM, home football game against North Reading, that is the opening event. We've notified, T E F is aware, the bank is aware, everyone's able to be here. There, that there may be a wrinkle that that doesn't happen, and so that is a, a discussion that's still happening. We certainly have a site superintendent, a project manager, and as of today, the president of G T C is involved in the discussion with me. It's hinging on an opinion of one, I'm not even going to say the trade, but one inspector to allow them to start working on some, on an area that may need an extra day or two in some opinions. But if that's allowed, we're on, we're still on track for the 14th. So everyone's fairly confident that's going to happen. It may be that we are, David White and Sons is finishing the paving at noon on Friday, the 14th of October, and we're hosing it down to cool it off so it sets. But, but we are, we are locked in on the, on the 14th. So unless that changes, and I would know that by tomorrow, we plan on putting out, starting to really push that date. Social media, had lots of discussions, and need to get the stadium committee back with T E F and, and athletics to, to plan the night. But we had played with the concept, Dina and I have talked several times about direct invitations versus just making it public. And we started down the road of former town officials, former school committee, former athletic director, and you get to a point where if you miss someone, it, it gets really hard and really ugly. So certainly, there'll be direct invitations to all current town officials, and certainly posted all over town and through social media, and, so we're going to, we're going to do it up really nice. But, so unless, unless something changes tomorrow, you should see that information start to come out by Friday, if not very early next week. We're working on, the students are designing hopefully a commemorative ticket for the night, and that's, that's one of the pieces now, that hopefully that becomes the basis of the invitation or posters that get sent out. So feels like it can't really be happening, but apparently it might, so. So that's where we're at.
Say "will."
It will. I'm sorry, I said "might." It will. 95% chance.
Great. Anybody have any questions? Yep?
Thanks for that update. So it's been a long process, and there were a number of students, student athletes in particular, that chose to pay it forward, never got to play on the field, but did a lot of really great work, and important work, I think, helping to lay the foundation. So I hope that one of the things we'll do is recognize some of those.
Absolutely.
Now.
Going to do our best, but like we said, Dan, we don't want to miss anybody. We're going to get the word out to as many people as we can.
Just me in general, I think. Be recognized during some type of ceremony.
Yes, that there were.
Absolutely.
Because there were really some.
Former students.
Great, great things done by.
Absolutely.
And we're part of the, you know, early on with T E F, we're part of those processes and part of the fundraising efforts that, like you said, they're now off in college, you know, running on a different track, but hopefully. I mean, I think those folks are a lot easier, you know, the past few years of graduates in the athletics arena are a little easier to get a hold of. So I, I know we'll certainly reach out to all those folks as well.
Absolutely. All right. Moving on to the additional recess at the elementary schools, Mr. Forget?
It was not last month, it was in the fall. There was a discussion at Newbury Elementary School about adding an additional recess during the day. Beth Yendo is now gone. It was brought about by a parent at Newbury. It was Ray, she's a pediatrician. I think there was some discussion with the committee. We were looking into the, the time on learning. So there's, there's two restrictions here. You have the minimum time on learning, which at the elementary level is 900 hours per year. And then there's our own local decisions and requirements as far as what needs to fit into the day. So we've done some work and believed. So we've done some work and believe that there's about 19 and a half, 20 minutes available for an additional recess during the day. In meeting with the elementary principals, I think last year Christopher had asked for information from each of the principals, and it was submitted, and each of them were telling it a little differently. So my interpretation now, making it an interpretation of what counts as time on learning and what doesn't, I believe we have about 20 minutes of capacity. That being said, the second discussion is, with everything that we as a district are saying needs to be accomplished in a year, what the school has decided is important and needs to happen within a year and within a school day, does that fit in? How do we fit it in? At Newbury, they have decided and they have fitted in, and we've said, okay, let's go with that on a pilot basis. At Pine Grove and at Salisbury, there were some differing opinions even within the staff as far as, I don't know how I'm going to fit that in and get everything done that I need to get done. I have yet to hear, correct if I'm wrong, I have yet to hear anyone say downtime is a bad thing. I don't think anyone would ever argue that an extra 20 minutes of fresh air in the middle of the day is a bad thing. So now it's a matter of fitting it in, and for example, if you have a schedule that, you know, having multiple grade levels out on a playground, the whole grade level can add interesting complexities. Certainly, if we have our PBIS working, humming along, that changes. But when you add too many kids in one space, that changes dynamics. So certainly, that's something that's being looked at, and if in the schedule it means that a classroom is having recess at 2:15, coming back in and going home, are we getting the value of that 20 minutes or is it just a lost 20 minutes? So those are the discussions we've had with the principals. We've also talked about, okay, could it be added in the middle of the day to an existing lunch and recess so that rather than a 20-minute recess, I'm sorry, 20-minute recess and 20-minute lunch, could it be a 25-minute lunch and then a 40-minute recess, or 35, or whatever the number is, so that there's a longer extended block in the middle of the day where they get to truly unwind? So, so this is just an FYI. Newbury is trying it. I haven't heard good, bad, or otherwise as of yet. I mean, we're only into the second week. And Pine Grove is bringing it to their school council next week. Next Wednesday is their first meeting, and I don't know when Salisbury's is. But there'll be discussion with both the school council and obviously the staff as well. And I know, I believe Christine Neeland at Pine Grove said it was coming up. There was a PTA headed on the agenda to talk last night. So it's being discussed at the school level, and I'll certainly keep you updated. I mean, the goal would certainly be to provide the same opportunity for all three elementary schools. That is absolutely the goal. We're trying this in phases to see what works and what doesn't work. So.
Great. Thank you.
Questions? No?
Monique?
Brian, will any, will these recess periods require supervision from outside people or will the teachers be doing?
It's the classroom teacher. At Newbury, it's the classroom teacher. So that's a factor. That's a decision that has to be made.
And then what about when the weather's bad? Where will the kids go? That's what they're thinking of now, too? Probably hanging around the gym or something? Probably something.
If the gym's available, if a gym class isn't happening, so yeah. So certainly, you know, indoor recess days, I'm not sure who hates them more, teachers or students. And then, you know, a 15-minute recess in the summer for a first grade bundled head to toe with the suit is a 45-minute venture at the first grade level. So when it's 20 degrees outside. So it's, so there are a lot of nuances here that, again, everyone agrees. I would love personally, a longer school day with more breaks and ideal, but working with a parameter, within the parameters, we're going to give it a shot and see what we can do.
Anybody else? Nerissa?
Hi. I was actually at the PTA meeting last night, which I thought was very informative for me. There were a number of parents there, I didn't count the number, and there were two teachers, a fourth-grade teacher and a first-grade teacher, and a specialist that were there as well. And so there were a couple of different parts of the conversation, but the teachers were very frank in saying that the idea of having a scheduled recess to them, they find it to be very difficult, that they feel like they're taking these organic motor breaks where when attention starts to drift, the students are getting antsy, they're getting them up, they're taking a nature walk around the school, they're in the classroom maybe doing some yoga, they're letting the kids get up and essentially move around and just take advantage of that signal that the students are giving them, to give them that chance to get some motor break time in there. The other thing that came up with Pine Grove was the fact that it only has one playground and how difficult it would be to schedule something around that. I would say that the parents that were there were moderately understanding of the motor break, but I definitely saw some questioning about whether, my guess, I'm making an interpretation here, was whether that was going on in every classroom, whether, you know, that was something that was just, I mean, we had two teachers who had taken the time to come to a PTA meeting, which is fantastic in itself, but are those that are already going the extra mile, are they the ones that, you know, are kind of epitomizing what we, you know, the breaks that you, type of breaks that you'd like to see and that maybe some of the other teachers are not completing those breaks? Personally, my thoughts on that was, I think there's three points to the breaks. They need, you know, some time to just take a break, literally take a break. They do need some time to move around, but I think the other thing for me that is important for recess is it's some time for the students to interact. And some of what I was hearing was they're not necessarily interacting during those, it's just a moving type of exercise, an academic exercise that's still being a classroom-led. So I don't know if those meet that, which for me was a particularly important thing when we talk about extra recess, but I will say it was, I think there was a level of understanding in the room when the specifics were explained to the group.
I appreciate you saying that because that had been a discussion that Christine had shared with me as well, that there's a lot of informal and whether it's brain pop and there's another, there are some online activities, it's just a break, you know? But again, as you said, it's as much about the social interaction and the lessons of cares on the playground. That's where the rubber hits the road because at the end of the day, we're going to get in trouble on the unstructured times of our lives when we choose to make an unwise choice. It's not, you know, sitting in the meeting. So that's helpful. I appreciate that. So that's, I'll be interested to hear the whole school reaction to that discussion. So.
Any other comments? Moving on to the superintendent's report, please.
Gosh, Brian's still talking. So just to reiterate, I feel very good about the opening of school. I feel like it was, as Beth said, this is not, this was not the Brian Show, but as far as what Kim and Anna Bates and Lori Mowbray did in planning professional development, I felt like it was a cohesive theme from convocation opening through the wild and crazy Charlie Applestein the next morning to other, you know, very extremely varied presenters that we had the whole school, I'm sorry, the whole district, all teachers here at this campus filtering through different speakers. And incredibly, if you put them, you line them all up as a mugshot line, polar opposite ends of the spectrum dealing with behavioral and social issues. So the response, I believe, as I wrote here, and there's a typo, it says 98% said the experience advanced their professional, it says feedback, it should say practice. That's incredibly positive for 98% of the folks who filled out a survey to feel like their three days, and again, it was a convocation day welcoming folks back, it was a district-wide day when everyone was here, and then it was a day on Thursday where each school worked on their own PBIS and social emotional issues. It was incredible how cohesive it felt, and I think that's what people understood, that it felt like there was a purpose, it was focused, and it was meaningful, something they're going to take back. And, you know, I talked in my opening remarks about, you know, remembering the why, and, you know, today was the day I had to open up my drawer and take up my sticky note of why I do this because it was one of those days. But that's important, and it's, you know, it's hard because it's crazy work some days that we're doing and some of the conversations you have and realize, I never would have guessed that this day was going in this direction. But, and that's the same in a classroom with a teacher, and so it's important to remember why we do what we do. So I feel very good about the opening of the year. The, I mentioned the additional recess. I want to mention here, top of the last page, there was a request, last month's meeting about breaking down literacy data by gender. We currently do not have that capacity. We can, obviously, any data we have, we can export, merge in Excel, and do work to get that data. It's obviously considerable amount of work to do that. So in doing that, I guess the question would be, is that something that as a committee, obviously don't have to decide right now, but is that a data point that you would want to see? To have that kind of data broken out and disaggregated by gender? Some of the, some of the data in the newer systems we've been talking about are much more complex and allow us to be that much more intricate in the way we pull that data out. So it may happen just by default and be able to do that, but that's something to think about in the future. You know, what is, if that's a reporting out, what's the value add for that, for that level of reporting? So that's just a piece of information to follow up. As far as personnel changes, the personnel report is in here, and to note that our data specialist has resigned, so pertinent to that piece of work, it wouldn't happen quickly. So some other points just to mention briefly, there was an email that you received from a parent in regards to her student with an allergy to dogs, resident of Salisbury. Obviously, we have a service dog in Salisbury Elementary. I have confirmed with that parent, both communicating with you as well as directly via phone, and so that student is now registered at Newbury Elementary School. We are providing transportation. That is not, as she had indicated, school choice, that's not school choice. We are meeting the needs of that child where we can't, at Salisbury. So we are transporting that student over to Newbury Elementary School. Also to let you know, there was an incident on the late bus last Thursday. It had received quite a bit of negative attention on Facebook, I would say pretty unfair treatment on Facebook. I have removed that driver from service based on the facts that I had at that moment. As of today, September 14th, at 8:25 PM, I'm not ready to say I had it wrong, but I feel more like I got it wrong. So that's a work in process. We'll continue to meet. We're meeting again with the bus company, the owner and the terminal manager tomorrow. But just to keep you updated, in case you hear about that, that is a work in progress. There was a question about, Monique had asked about, or Monique and Linda were talking last month about support for literacy interventions, both at Salisbury and middle school where the need was noticed. We have continued to work with Jim at Salisbury and we believe the supports are in place. Is it ideal? No. We agreed that the more glaring need as far as providing interventions was at the middle school. It's not the, it's not the perfect solution, but there was a 10-hour-per-week person that we increased to halftime, so a full halftime FTE. So again, it was what we could do within the budget at this point in time, and it will certainly will make an impact. But just to keep you updated, that's certainly a focus, and that will be something that as we, as we get into budget season, there's going to be a lot of areas that we're going to be looking at. So we'll try and keep it under a 25. Oh, Joe left. And one last update for, unless there are any questions about that? Should I stop? Should I take a breath? Sorry.
That FTE, that, where are they going to be, at the middle school?
At the middle school. I'm sorry. Yes, yes. That's at the middle school. So it was someone who was already 10 hours, and so they, you know, just under 20 hours. Yep. And just an update on Pine Grove School. So Nerissa is your elected member for the Pine Grove School Committee, I'm sorry, the Pine Grove School Building Committee. Pine Grove does not have its own school committee anymore. We have met several times. We, yesterday, is that yesterday? Yesterday, Christine Neeland, Joe Perry and I went into Boston. We were part of the designer selection panel, the DSP, went through the process, allowed us to forego an interview schedule because of the strong opinions of everyone, including our own review panel, but then also of the other 13, 14 members who are Boston-area architects and designers who volunteer and sit as a peer review, and MSBA staff and executives, that the designer that we decided was the best, was indeed the best, and so allowed us to go ahead and select. So it would be Doran Whittier, which is based out of Newbury Port. It's a local company, local names, local faces, and if you care to look through their proposal, they've already started to dissect the Pine Grove problems. They get it, they know the building, they've walked through twice. And for me, I'm pleased because we had to disqualify them as the owner's project manager. They do both sides of the house, they have different, two different firms, because of a technicality, which, when I talk to them, it was literally a technicality, but it's, a law is a law. So I'm pleased because we have an OPM who we really loved, and then Doran Whittier will be working with us. So still on schedule to bring a proposal to the town meeting in May. We have confirmed from the MSBA that we are part of the, what was it called? The LSR. It's the Limited Scope Repair Pathway. So remember, the core program is the big shebang, it takes you 18 months just to get going. The accelerated repair is a nine-month process, door, roofs, windows. And so the core program is if you watch Penn Tucket next door, they're looking at the high school, and that's soup to nuts. So they've, Triton with Pine Grove and Blue Hills Regional in Canton, there's a secondary and Pine Grove is the elementary that they're piloting this LSR pathway. So that's now confirmed. We sat at a table and they said, this is really it. So it's exciting. It's, we're moving. And I, again, I wasn't confident that we were going to be able to get this far this quickly, but we are continuing to work, and a lot of this is going through, none of the votes come from this committee. The votes go through the school building committee, and then it's through the Board of Selectmen and Rowley. So by Monday night at the Selectmen's meeting, they plan to approve the contract with Doran Whittier, again, assuming what happens tomorrow night, and then also approving approach or a methodology, which is Chapter 149A, which is called a construction manager at risk. So what we did here is a design bid build. The designers design it, a contractor bids on it, and then the contractor builds it. So in that, between the second and the third phases, the designer and the contractor just fight the entire time. So with a construction manager at risk, you actually don't have a bid for the contract. You bid and hire a contract, a construction manager that's hired during the schematic budget and design phase, and then they build it. So they're having input into the design, obviously measured by the designers and the OPM, and then they know they're inheriting that plan that they agreed. So there's obviously risk, but it is, I would say it's probably the ideal approach when we're talking about an occupied phased approach, which we will certainly be not finding an alternative location. We'll be using what they call swing space, which will be moving kids from point A to point B and renovating and then moving. So Doran Whittier has extensive experience in that regard, and then I think the CM, the construction manager at risk model will really speed things up. So happy to answer any questions if there are any about that or any other items on my report.
Anybody have any questions for the superintendent on his report? Thank you. Moving on to the action items, the next item is the charter schools resolution. This is to consider the proposed resolution as drafted by the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee. So I'm going to ask Linda to address this, please.
Okay. When we were developing this resolution, we were trying to focus on the main points of what the charter cap was and the things that we were, had issue with. So you want me to read this for the public to hear? Or do you want to read it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Members of the Triton School Committee hereby request the Massachusetts House and Senate not raise the existing cap on charter schools in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as proposed in Legislature House Bill 3928. Charter schools are publicly funded. Charter schools are publicly funded and operate under their own standards of conduct and curriculum outside the realm of the local public school districts. Regulations and rules apply to charter schools, however, they are generally outside the bounds of traditional educational oversight by the state and instead are governed by a Board of Directors. Currently, even with reimbursement from the state, the Triton School District sends $568,395 to charter schools to educate 52 students, more than double the cost if those same 52 students attended another Massachusetts district via school choice. The taxpayers of the Triton School District member towns have absolutely no say in how these funds are spent. Other concerns the Triton School District has with the lifting of the charter school cap is local taxpayers are not democratically elected to be on the boards of charter schools. Charter schools do not have any measurable or enforceable requirements to enroll and retain students with special needs, English language learners, and those classified as economically disadvantaged. Charter schools do not have accountability or transparency to local taxpayers to ensure they are responsive to the needs of their communities. Given the significant unresolved concern surrounding charter schools, the Triton School Committee calls for the Legislature to reject any legislation that raises the current cap on charter schools. We encourage our elected officials to support a monitorium on raising the cap and take a step back to evaluate and carefully investigate the potential impact of charter school expansion, as well as an alternative mechanism to fund the charter schools. I also had put on the bottom of this, one of my favorite poets, in the words of James Baldwin, "These are all of our children, and we will all profit by or pay for whatever they become."
Thank you. Do we have a motion to consider the proposed resolution as drafted by the Policy and Advocacy Subcommittee and formally approve the measure?
I'll make a motion to consider it or to approve it?
To approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the document outlining the Triton Regional School District's school committee's position on charter school cap.
Second.
Do we have a second? Thank you, Dan. Any discussion? Nerissa?
One question and one comment. My question was, my understanding was, a lot of this was around the ballot question. Is there a specific reason why the resolution doesn't address the ballot question as well, or is that just the way you decided?
I just went by trying to give people, when they read this, an overview of why we were against the reason that can be added in here if we choose to.
I don't think we can add that because it gets too political, I believe.
Right. And I think that by referencing House Bill 3928, that addresses what question it is.
Okay. All right. I was just worried it was confusing in that my understanding was, you know, making a generalized statement about how the committee feels about this, that it wasn't going to be obvious to the average person reading this. What?
Well, bear in mind that, I mean, the goal, we want to send this to our legislators so they'll know. They will have a greater understanding. I understand your concern, but yes, this does address, in my view anyway, the issue of charter schools. And I especially like the fact that you've included the amount of money that Triton loses due to charter schools. Did you have more?
Yeah, I just had one other thing, which was, it says Triton School Committee threw out a lot of it, and then other concerns the Triton School District has. I was just wondering if that should be changed to school committee rather than district. I don't, that's a small thing, but I didn't know if it should be, the phrasing should be changed.
It should say committee.
Yeah, I agree. Deb?
Well, I just, I kind of agree with what Dick said. I don't think this should anywhere on it say vote no on question two. But I think we should all have signs on our lawns that say vote no on question two.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to make a couple comments, because I've done a lot of investigating of this. I think the public needs to understand that lifting the cap does not apply only to urban schools, because that'll be the argument. This cap can go anywhere. If you lift this cap, somebody that runs a charter school could come to Newbury and open up a school without permission from a local, anybody here. They could just open it up. And I really think that's terrible. The other thing is, I want people to know, because the advocates will say, well, it provides a choice for parents. It doesn't provide a choice for children in our district. If you live in Salisbury, or Newbury, or Raleigh, you are not transported to the local public school. Your parent has to provide transportation. And I consider that, I mean, how could we pay for public transportation? If you live in Newbury Port, you will be transported to the local charter school. And to me, that's discrimination. And I also looked at the statistics of our local charter school, and they are nowhere near a reflection of what this district has. So in my view, it's charter schools are a private school with public dollars. They are advertising on Facebook in a lot of places, and that's against the law. And that was even in the newspaper, and I even checked it myself on Facebook. There are charters that are telling their parents to vote, you know, for lifting the cap, which is absolutely wrong. So you're either a public school, and you're a public school, or you have a private school, and you're a private school. You can't have it both ways at taxpayer's expense. And to expand this, to me, is an extreme travesty.
Thank you, Monique. Anyone else? I just want it noted, too, since the public doesn't see this document before us, but there is a space for every school committee member to sign it instead of just having the chair sign it, which I think sends a stronger message as well. So is there any further comment or discussion on adopting this resolution? All in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you all. So we will make those changes to this document and have it ready. The sooner we can have it signed, the better. So I'm going to say, well, no, I'm thinking, yeah, by the first, definitely. But if we can have this changed in the central office so that if people are coming in for subcommittee meetings or whatever, we'll have the original there so that you can sign it. And if it's not signed by the first, we'll have it at the first. Thank you all.
Just one more thing, please. If it's possible and appropriate, would it be wise to send this on to the towns just so that they're made aware of?
Sure. Yep. Good suggestion. Moving on to the subcommittee reports. Linda? Policy?
We have three policies that we have to approve for the first reading. And the main purpose of having these was that, sorry, I just had to read what my notes said. It was updating for required language from Legislature in a policy in March 2016. And what we had done was just taken a blanket from MAS C that covered all the wording and changes that were in the documents.
Thank you.
Do you want to add anything, Brian?
I would just say, so there are three policies. The drug-free workplace policy, GBE-C, is updated merely because of some semantics as it's referencing laws. So that is a policy we've had. We have documentation we provide to employees. There's nothing new there. Prohibition of alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students, J-I-H. Again, it's updated, but there was a policy, we have always prohibited students from using drugs, alcohol, and tobacco in school. C, which is File IHA, I don't know where they come up with these, IHAMB. It's the IHAM file. The teaching, this is what's new. This is where now by statute, we have to have a, you have to have a policy. So once you approve this, you have a policy that we're teaching explicitly, which is then the challenge. So if you have the policy, we have to advocate for that because there's going to be a cost associated with instruction. There is guidance coming from the state, probably Monday, along with this law. There was some pretty explicit language about how this is taught, and there was the requirement, starting in the 1718 year, to use a verbal screening tool, a verbal screener of substance abuse. I don't know what that tool is. It's obviously a tool that has been developed. It's subject to appropriation, and that's both locally and at the state level. So I personally, haven't had a lot of discussion with folks, but I personally have a grave concern about folks who are not trained to hear information about substance abuse, interpreting information that they're hearing from students. That belongs with a very skilled clinical professional, not with the average Joe who may be brilliant but not trained to receive and deal with that type of information. So there'll be considerable pushback and a lot more money required before, you know, I would say, yes, we're ready to implement that. So that is, my understanding, that's the, they've been talking all along. We waited on my advice because they kept saying there's more advice coming from the Department of Ed, but the policies through MAS C, I don't believe we changed a single word. They are the boilerplate policies that everyone has been adopting. So, some background.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve as a first reading the policy on drug-free workplaces as approved by the Policy Subcommittee on Tuesday, September 6?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Linda. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Sure.
I have a question about the second one, the J-I-C-H.
We're just doing the first one right now.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I thought we were doing all three at the same time.
Nope. Doing them individually. Any on the first one? Nope. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. It's unanimous. Okay. Moving on to the second one. Do we have a motion to approve as the first reading the policy on the prohibition of alcohol, tobacco, and drug use by students as approved by the Policy Subcommittee on Tuesday, September 6?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Linda. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Dan. Any discussion? Maureen?
Okay. On the second one, I wanted to just ask, it talks about school property where students aren't allowed to have, you know, use drugs on school property, but also talks about school-sponsored activities. Since we are a school that has students that travel abroad, should we add language in that, you know, sort of has the same school policies applied to trips abroad?
I'm just trying to find that so I have the right policy in front of me.
If it's a school-sponsored activity, I think it would cover it. If it's one of our, and we approve it.
Anywhere on earth, if it's school-sponsored.
Okay.
Yep.
That's kind of what I was going to say.
And also, I want to bring it up because Dick asked the question. Last year, we were dealing with a student incident, and there was a recommendation about changing some language in our handbooks. It was about self-reporting. So if a student is caught drinking and per MIAA protocol, they miss 25% of their season. That's just a boilerplate rule. There was some discussion about perhaps making that a little, beef that up a little bit and say, if you self-report, we'll give you the 25%. If you don't, and we find out later, then it's, fill in the blank, half the season, the whole season. So I actually ran that by, Dick mentioned that in the Policy Subcommittee, and I did run that by our council. And Naomi said, you probably don't want to put that into policy, because again, think of it like the zero tolerance policy. You completely restrict yourself of having no leeway versus something that you can change in a procedure much more easily. And then the administrator has discretion in dealing with the situation. So I just wanted to mention that because that was a great question, and I was thinking how we could do it. And she said, her advice, again, it's legal advice, would be to not go that far, because you can't come back from that. So.
Any further discussion on this policy? All in favor? Any opposed? The vote is unanimous. Moving on to the last policy. Do we have a motion to approve as a first reading the policy on the teaching about alcohol, tobacco, and drugs as approved by, that's the same one. No, it's not. Nope, this is the second one, the third one, sorry. As approved by the Policy Subcommittee on Tuesday, September 6?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Linda. Do we have a second, please?
Second.
Any discussion on this policy? My question, Mr. Forget, if you are concerned about the budgetary implications, do we wait on this, or do we approve it as a first reading? And you said, because guidance should be coming out on Monday?
Again, that's about those pieces, those components that would be implemented in 1718. And again, I don't, that would be, no, sorry to say this, no, because that would be in the DSE regulations about how to implement the policy. So your policy is, we have to have the, we have to have explicit instruction that meets this.
Okay.
That would be, DSE recommends, these are the procedures.
All right. Got you. All right. Any further discussion on this policy? All in favor? Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Finance Subcommittee. Nerissa, I know you guys haven't met, but do you want to mention anything about coming up?
I don't think so. We do pretty much the same thing every month, so I was saying, Brian, the agenda is the same as the last meeting.
Well, I need to add a huge mea culpa, because I have no clue how it fell off this agenda, because I've had it in our notes that we've met with on Weeks Forever. The regional agreement is not on this agenda tonight.
I know, but I think we did that on purpose because it's coming up with the district communications in October.
I thought we all want, because the committee hasn't discussed it as a whole yet. In June, the Finance Subcommittee brought it to the full committee, and we were going to talk about it tonight. And so, like I said, I'm not, I have no clue, because I've had that on the list for four months now.
I made the assumption that we were going to discuss it during the goal setting, because that was one of the Finance Subcommittee's goals. So I assumed, since it was a two-year goal, that it was going to, that it was going to roll into that goal discussion and essentially be part of that goal discussion.
That's what I was assuming, too.
I share in your mea culpa then, because I missed it, too.
What did you do, Deana? I don't know what you were thinking, Deana.
I got a zonch, because if it had been on the agenda...
It would have been late.
So, yes. Nerissa, I think that's a good suggestion. We'll kind of touch on that at the workshop, but again, briefly, because I think the bigger discussion will happen.
Well, I guess the question, and I don't know if we can say, ask this question because it's not on the agenda, is there anything glaring that people saw in that revision or version that they thought, oh, that's just no way?
That's what I mean. I...
Because I think then it's powerful to say to the towns, when we're meeting on the 6th, to say, here's the version, the committee has seen it, we haven't debated it yet, but we want your input.
Right.
And then we'll debate it the next month and then take action. So that's what I was planning all along.
Okay, good.
So I didn't put it on the agenda tonight, but I just want to acknowledge that.
Challenge that.
No, I, 100%, I have no clue. I mean, literally, how many lists? Every week, it's at the list. I just copy it and put it on the list. So my apologies.
I'll share in that apology.
Okay. I'll take it. I'll take 60%.
Okay. Moving on, before we adjourn, I just want to say that I had Patty make a copy of this. I kind of did talking points, suggested talking points for the open houses. It's not carved in stone. You don't have to do it this way, but those are kind of what we've done in the past and what we felt worked well, and it gives them a brief description of what we do, why we do it, and where to get further information. Also included the open house schedule. Please be sure that you attend the ones that you signed up for. You can attend any of them or all of them. If you cannot make it, please let me know, and we'll try and reshuffle and, yes?
And I was going to say, the principals are aware, and they know, they have a copy of this, so they know 15 to 20 minutes total, right? No, just kidding, like three to five minutes.
Yeah.
And Maureen, you're signed up for all of them.
Yes, real brief. Again, our workshop is on the 1st. Please, again, come with goals in mind to work on, and then we will approve those on the 19th.
And when Patty disappeared and came back, she went up, edited that resolution, and before you all leave, eight of you can sign the resolution right now, because that's been edited.
Thank you, Patty.
That now says committee throughout.
Here. Yep.
And I can report that I can go to the NES open house on the 21st.
On the 21st? Wonderful. We have them all covered. Thank you, Dan. Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All right. I heard Maureen.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Any discussion on that? All in favor? We are adjourned. All right, any discussion on that? All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.